Hi, I'm Kalihi, chairman of the board. Fifteen in naming session. In the beginning, I'd like to have an honorable mention for the coaches at Damian High School. I believe the names are Anthony Tuatelle and Mr. Domashio. They got their jobs back. So I want to honor that because they have a long history in Kalihing teaching young boys to be grown men. And to give back to the community, many alumni from Damian give back to the community, so I wanted to honor them. Another honorable mention, condolences to the families of Emmy Tomimbo. She also has contributed much to the Filipino immigration and the Filipino community. So I wanted to give condolences to the family and friends of Emmy. And now we're gonna begin with the report from Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, I'm Captain Paul Bass of Kalihing Kai Fire Station Second Watch. I'm here to present the statistics for the month of January. So we had four structure fires, ten nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires and anything outside a structure or vehicle. No cooking fires, fifteen activated alarms, two hundred and twenty-four medical responses, one motor vehicle accident involving a pedestrian, and fifteen other motor vehicle accidents. And there were two hazardous materials incidences. This month's fire safety tip is don't stall, call 911. So call 911 right away when there's an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, remain calm. The operator may ask for additional information or even provide instructions. Sometimes they'll give CPR over the phone, they'll instruct you how to do CPR if you need it. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception or voice communication, you can text your emergency to 911. And if you don't know the passcode or a cellphone, once you get the screens, in the bottom corner, there's emergency. So you can push that emergency button and make a call to 911. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board?
I do.
Is that Angela?
Yes.
Go ahead, Angela.
Thank you. Angela Motherly Young on behalf of Roar Rescue Animal Rights. So I was just wondering about CPR. Is there training that we can get? Because when we advocate for animals and we rescue kittens and then perform trap and neuter services, there's this animal education initiative nonprofit that we work with and won an award from the Hawaii Children and Youth Network. They train at schools to teach students about performing CPR on puppies. So is there something similar for humans?
The only thing I'm familiar with is the American Red Cross as a bystander CPR program. I was at a different station and one of the firefighters saw CPR on animals online. And we did actually use it. But I don't think, I don't know of anything locally training CPR for pets or animals.
Oh no, for humans. I was paralleling it to the animal-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about CPR for animals, sorry.
Class.
Okay, I refer you to the American Red Cross Bystander CPR Program. We do assist them with that.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions from the community?
Just have one question, real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for being here. So the question, in terms of the, I think, naloxone, because of what, I believe, I'm trying to remember what the name here of the drug, fentanyl. Have you seen, have you seen more of an increase on that? Sorry.
I'm aware of maybe two cases in the last month where naloxone was administered and it was by paramedics. Usually it's for somebody you find laying on the sidewalk and it's just in case they are on opiates.
Okay.
But I would add that all of our rigs are equipped with naloxone and also HPD has that as well.
Very good. Any questions from the community? Go ahead.
Evening Captain Bass, an evening song, Tommy Beck. I appreciate in regards to prevalence of electrical vehicles on the roadway. There's possible inherent dangers of them catching fire, thermal runaway, or from accidents to the batteries itself. What does the fire department recommend for someone gets in an accident, electric vehicles? What precautions take because of the probability of, I guess hazards from the materials that burn the battery?
Well, this doesn't just happen with cars. We recently went to one with an electric bike that was overcharged. And what they did, as the bike was burning and before we got there, they dragged the bike out away from their home. With an electric vehicle, if the thing is on fire, there's not much the driver can do about it except get to safety. And I would advise them get to safety quickly. If we arrive, it's gonna take a lot of water to put out that electric vehicle fire. Probably more than we have on our apparatus and we have 750 gallons. There are cases, if nothing else is around, there's no exposures, we might just let that car burn. But yeah, as the operator or passenger in an electrical vehicle, my suggestion is just get out quickly and call 911, of course.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move along.
Thank you.
Please, there are any more committees? Honolulu Police Department District One.
Hello, everyone. Lieutenant Segusio from representing District One Community of Responsibility. Hope everyone's a super bowl week and Valentine's week was enjoyable. I'm gonna be providing you guys a statistical information for District One area. If you guys need more specific information, you guys can go to the public website, www.honolulupd.org. So motor vehicle thefts for the month of January were three. Previous to that was two burglaries, was one. Previous month was two thefts, were four. Previous month was two. U M Vs or car break-ins were five. Previous month was six. Assaults were two. Previous to that was six. And then sex assaults, graffiti cases and drug offenses were all zero for both months, yeah. So there's no criminal breaches in regards to the District One area. Total cost for service for your area is 268 compared to the previous month of 260. So the safety aware, it's not a safety tip, but more of a safety awareness for the Honolulu Police Department to our, you know, community members. Is there has been an uptick in regards to motor vehicle thefts in regards to Kias and Hyundai's? We're asking the community members just to be more vigilant, take more proper precautions, you know, getting alarms, steering clubs and just parking in more secured areas, yeah. We're also asking the community members to check the website to see which particular year vehicles are affected and then refer back to the dealerships in order to possibly get a software upgrade so that they can mitigate these thefts, yeah. Just to explain some of the severity of the thefts, myself and Lieutenant Hatiko, he works in District Five. So District One and District Five, out of the total thefts in regards to across the island, we incurred 52% of the thefts. So we're just asking the community members just to be more aware. See something, say something. At this point, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time to take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I do.
Angela, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wondering about reporting anonymously. I've trained with our team from this district for Neighborhood Security Walk and also a few of the other citizens patrols and Neighborhood Security Watch teams from like Department of Hawaiian Homelands.
Angela, what's your question? I'm sorry, what's your question?
So we never learned about the reporting anonymously because if, let's say, for example, if I see someone getting assaulted, like a domestic violence case, but I don't want to draw attention to it. So how do I report it like anonymously?
You know what, Angela, we do often get those types of calls, yeah. But just realize this, right, when people call 911 to report any type of crime and they want to re, and become anonymous and stuff like that, we just, you just got rid of the best witness, right? Because you guys are reporting it. Anybody can report it anonymously, you guys can call 911 and say you don't want me to meet with the officers. But that is the conundrum, yeah. That is the conundrum with law enforcement and the community, right? We have to have community engagement in order to fight crime. If we don't have good witnesses, there's no way we're gonna get prosecution, that's just the merit fact, yeah. So we're gonna suggest that people, you know, stick around, speak to the officers, tell them what they saw and be good witnesses. There's other ways of reporting things, like not so immediate, like an assault. If you're reporting some sort of issue with like residentially challenged persons hanging out in a particular area or graffiti in a particular area. I suggest everyone download the Honolulu 311 app. It's a free app. It is routed through the city and then it's, the particular cases are then trickle down to the proper divisions in order to get it fixed, right? So graffiti, we go to the graffiti hotline and all of that stuff. Other criminal types of cases would get forwarded to HPD. I hope that answers your question.
Can I text it to the hotline?
Um, yeah, so there is a text, there's a text function and then you can remain anonymous. And just like I said, we do often get those types of calls, but it's really difficult, yeah. So we'll go there and we'll try to, you know, do the proper case. We'll try to see if we can get some adjudication in regards to the criminality. But without witnesses and without the community's help, it's a very difficult task.
For sure. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from the board?
Yes, was that an app or a website?
Honolulu 311.
Any more questions from the board? None. Any questions from the community? Any questions online from the community? Thank you so much, Lieutenant. Moving on to District Five.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Creighton Hatiko. I'm one of the nighttime commanders here at the Kalihing Station. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Let me provide you guys with some statistics first. For the month of January, there were thirteen burglaries reported, thirty motor vehicle thefts, sixty-one general thefts and seventeen thefts on vehicles. Total cost for service for the month of January were 2,883 as compared to 2,802 for December. Just to give you some perspective, your guys' area encompasses nine beats out of District Five. So it's kind of a huge area, so don't be too alarmed by the numbers. That's, it averages out pretty much for the rest of the, the rest of the district as well. Lieutenant Segusio already gave you guys some excellent tips, so I'm gonna defer to the board and the community for any questions.
Any questions for the board?
Yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Angela.
Thank you. So I got an email from the District Five Community Policing Team.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it was an announcement about celebrating Safe Communities Day in Pearl City. And there's gonna be the team of city and state emergency response teams. I was wondering, is the prosecuting attorney gonna be there?
I would guess not, actually, because the CPT is not prosecutors, I mean to say. They're primarily concerned with the patrol element in terms of prosecuting the crimes and receiving the crimes. I cannot say for sure because I don't know for sure. But usually the CPT events, prosecutors don't normally get involved with that.
Okay, it says AG is gonna be there and also the Department of Justice from the federal level. So I was just wondering about the city level. Thank you.
If they're gonna be participating, it's very likely that the prosecutors will probably be showing face as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure, sorry. I just want some clarification for this area. And it's also with the special police officers, SPOs, mainly dealing with Dillingham. I've seen a lot of cars that, you know, though there is a sign that shows that people can't turn on that private road into Costco. I've seen that happen and almost hit buses sideways, you know. Is there anything that's being done or is that mostly on heart side? Or is there anything you guys are coordinating with heart aside from what their SPOs are doing to your regular patrol?
Unfortunately, that whole corridor because of the rail, the rail work, a lot of the drivers, everybody tends to be a lot, they're really impatient. So, and a lot of times the drivers are confused by the coning and such things. So sometimes they make stupid choices. We don't have anything specifically in place, but I will mention to the daytime, the daytime commander that is a concern. That's that, that's that side road that goes into the parking lot from-
You know, when they actually took the time to count, for example, there was about 20 or so within, I think it was in two hours or something. Actually, the time to sit over there and walk. And the reason I bring that up is because it's gonna happen one day. I'm sure it will happen one day, but if someone's-
What is the time element you're talking about, sir?
The time element?
Yeah, when, when were you observing?
I'm gonna say during the, like, I'm saying, like, close to late afternoon, like, late afternoon. I'm just saying, but beyond all this that I'm just talking about in terms of that right now. If there is no coordination or if that's all handled by heart, if there is something that's going on or if there isn't, there needs to be some level of coordination on that because someone will get hit or a pedestrian will probably get hurt.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, you know, just clarification if there's coordination on that.
I will mention it to the daytime guys and I'll make sure that they know that it's an issue.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any questions from the community?
Thank you, Lieutenant. My name is Ernest Palvallo. I'm Chair for Neighborhood Board 13. We have a big problem at the O R L station, you know what that is, right? The O R L station, where you're doing it and king. There is, no one's taking care of the houses that are building tents there. No one's taking care of houses that are actually building, preformed in all apart. There is to be no tents per city law. No tents or anything built up in the park that will cover and make forms. That's against the law. That's a city part. But we're getting put between the sheriff's department and the police department. Sheriff, police department is saying they can't do anything because these tents are tying themselves up to the fence. And the fence belongs to the state. And yet the sidewalk where they're building their homes belongs to the city. What are you folks gonna do to alleviate that problem? Because people are walking on the streets. I myself walk to work because I work there. I literally have to walk on the street, which is dangerous. And then, but two weeks ago, they're throwing bicycles and wheelchairs into the streets on, into uncommon parts. What are we gonna do to solve this problem?
I understand, I understand you're upset about it. Just to let you know, for a period of about two months, we were prevented from taking any kind of action because we're currently being sued by the ACLU. We won that case and we were also told to not do any enforcement because they were doing the headcount of the homeless, homeless community. That is completed now, so we've already started, started back up with our normal enforcement. So you should see a difference soon.
Okay, so I do understand about the ACLU because I testified for the city in that case. I still have not seen anything, it's just getting worse and worse out there. And the defecation and all that is terrible. But the fighting that's going on, the prostitution and the drug use in those tents right there is unacceptable. And I want as the cops and the police, the police and sheriffs keep on going. I see it every single day, from the time I go into work to the time I go off and even at night when I come back to check their areas. So something really does need to be done. I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
No problem, sir. And it's a, it is a very high priority for us right now and we are pushing that issue at the moment.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, isn't it also correct that they can call 311? Is that correct or not?
That's also true and then it'll go through a different channel for the, but that one takes normally, it's a little bit of a roundabout because more than one city group gets involved and so they have to coordinate. But in terms of when we have camping in the park, structures on the sidewalk, that's something that officers can take immediate action on.
Just to give people options that they can call 311. Therefore, it is a coordinated effort. Human services, social services will reach out to them, start organization. It's a longer process. Sometimes it's the better process. Instead of calling 911, gentlemen and women have many emergencies to respond to. Especially nowadays with a lot of the smashing, grab and other illegal activities that's causing people to not feel safe in their homes and their neighborhoods and wherever they could be working or playing. So nonetheless, it's either 911 if there's an immediate emergency or safety situation going on, current and active, or 311. Of course, we see homeless everywhere. They're established. Sometimes social services is the key. Thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving along to Board of Water Supply.
Good evening, Iris Hoda from the Board of Water Supply. Here to report for January, we had made four main breaks. On the 23rd of January, near 1210 Dillingham Boulevard. On the 24th, there was two near 958 Cupcake Temple Lane. And on the 30th, there was one near 1437 Dillingham Boulevard. I have one general water announcement. We have a limited time $100 toilet rebate. So we're providing our customers a big offer of $100 on Water Sense labeled toilets. That's the 1.2 gallon per flush or less. So this $100 is more than double our usual rebate and it's only gonna be offered for 90 days, which started earlier. So it's only till April 18th. So this special rebate is limited to four per household and 10 for commercial customers. So go to boardofwatersupply.com/rebates to get more information on this. And if there's any questions?
Everybody likes a rebate as it's exploding on so many different levels. So Iris, I wanted to ask a question. Next month, your Board of Water Supply is gonna be on the agenda for a Red Hill update, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear that from my side, but I was out of the office for a while, so. You are putting, let me let them know, so on next month, the March agenda, you're gonna add for Red Hill update?
Yes, I do have Board of Water Supply on the agenda for next month. I wanted to get that confirmed through you or have some correspondence because of the presentation that I'm anticipating and let's get on the backboard. So March, that's to talk about the rebates and an update for Red.
Okay, I'll check in with them and have them, somebody contact you.
Thank you so much.
Which one do you rather have, the commission or you contacted for the coordination?
Oh, please.
Both, okay.
Yes, yes, please. Thank you so much. Any questions for the board? Angela?
Yes, I do have a question. Thanks. Board of Water Supply, I was wondering, so when someone buys an environmental protection agency Water Sense labeled weather-based irrigation controller device, we can qualify for a rebate of up to $100?
I have to look online about the Water Sense label amount for the, you're talking about for irrigation? This, the one I mentioned earlier is for toilets. Sorry, I don't know the irrigation one. I, I would have to look online.
Oh, okay.
So sorry about that. It may be 100, but I'm not sure. If you don't mind looking. It's under the rebate area. Please go to boardofwatersupply.com/rebates and you'll see the one for the irrigation too.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Rusty.
So I was wondering, although it's for the irrigation controller device and the other one is for a toilet, the concept is the same, right? Environmental protection of water resources. What are the detrimental effects of the, like, water usage that's not considerate of environmental standards?
Sorry, I'm not sure if it's EPA, environmental protection. It's for water conservation, for the toilet to reduce the amount of water being flushed. And for the controller or for the irrigation, I'm not really sure what it's, what the device, what portion of the device is covered. But that would help. The irrigation is to reduce the amount of water that's being sprayed. You would rather use it during the better times of the day and when it needs water so it'd be able to be sensed if the area is dry. I don't have one, so I'm not exactly sure how it works, but we're basically trying to conserve water. We're asking you guys to conserve water with these, these type of environmental, these type of devices. So sorry, in terms of environmental protection, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Iris. Any questions from the community? Any questions from the rest of the board? No? Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Iris. I hope to hear the presentation for next month. Please respond to me in the NCO office.
That's right. We'll get back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving along to, we have vacancies. We have two at our seat. I missed real, how dare I? Sorry, Heart, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Harry Cho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. First, I just have a general announcement for an upcoming water outage in the area related to our utility work. All customers on Kaahai Street, Kaahai Place and Kaamahu Place should be receiving a notice for an overnight water outage on March 1st. So if you have any questions regarding that, feel free to contact me. And next, regarding your concern about illegal turns on Dillingham, like you mentioned, board member farm. Since the start of our work, we have installed signage and positioned special duty officers at the major intersections to try to deter drivers from making illegal turns. But as you all know, not everyone follows the law when driving and there are instances where people, you know, won't follow the posted signage. But we're continuing to work with DTS and the special duty police officers to try to improve safety for the motorists and pedestrians on Dillingham. But with, and with all the cones on, on Dillingham, it can seem a little confusing at first, but it's actually very straightforward. There's one lane in each direction and left turns at the intersections and coming in, coming in and out of driveways is prohibited. So that's generally, generous speaking, that's the traffic condition. But like I mentioned, we'll continue to work with the, the special duty officers to try to enforce that. But those were the only two items from my report, but I can take any additional questions.
I have one for you, Harry.
Sure.
So many, 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 many years ago, the Mandemareo was being built in Waipahu. Ground was being broken. I used to attend Waipahu Neighborhood Board in addition to Kalihing because I wanted to see what was happening there first, right? Many, many years ago, you weren't around just yet. With that being said, because of the impact of construction on the community and the businesses in Waipahu, that corridor, Waipahu, there were discount coupons, booklets to support the businesses in the Waipahu community so they wouldn't be impacted. And they are now, for Kalihing, at least we are. Businesses are being impacted and some have actually left Kalihing. Some of which are small businesses owned by local people. With that being said, what can be done? As creative as it was for the Waipahu community and it benefited them during times where it was hard and impacted the businesses of having the same amount of flow of customers. Can that be done too for those in the Kalihing area also?
So there was a program in the past, you know, like a marketing- Um so there was a program in the past, um you know, like a marketing type of program to try to. Um, I guess increase uh increase the public awareness so that. You know, the the folks in the area that are, you know, either living or visiting in the area can. Uh shop or or eat at those restaurants or or stores. Um so we do still try to promote our uh the businesses through our social media and our weekly e-blast. Um and that's something that we try to do to um. I guess engage the public and and make sure they're aware that, you know, the businesses in Kalihia are still open for business. Um but the the program with the coupons that um actually got. I guess uh canceled because um. There was some hesitation for uh some of the businesses to offer discounts. Um and. Uh I guess that program just wasn't that effective. So what we've kind of transitioned to. Um is to just try to promote the businesses through our social media and our e-blast. And that's kind of what we've been doing um for the last couple of years.
I'm gonna push back just a little bit, but professionally and respectfully always. Now is the time to be very creative and think outside the box. What didn't work for the Waipahu area. Maybe could work now. The situation is, again, I'm gonna repeat myself, you know. Businesses are impacted. Things are very expensive. Please work with the businesses. Please work with the businesses. Whatever discounts could be to cause more traffic for people to come around. And that money to be filtered back into the community. So I'm gonna push a little bit. Whatever can be done, something extra, please.
Um understood. Um but just to um, I guess.
You don't have to give an answer right now, Harry. You don't have.
I just wanted to clarify, Heart. Um I understand we we do coordinate our construction activity with the businesses, the residents. Property owners to make sure um you know, everything is done. Uh properly and and coordinated accordingly with them. Um but we. Just oversee the construction aspect of the project. When it comes to helping businesses. Uh financially, that's not some, that's not any, that's not something that we oversee and we don't have any programs. Uh to help businesses in that way. Um but the city council actually. Uh just passed a a bill, Bill forty, uh which is related to the Transit Mitigation Fund. Um and that is a way that the the city is going to try to help. Uh businesses that have been financed, uh impacted financially um by our construction. Um I don't have any details on that program. I think it's very, um I think the bill just passed like. Uh earlier this week or maybe a week ago. Um and I don't think the program is anywhere near to being in. Anywhere near to being implemented yet. Uh but perhaps um if the council member or. Uh the mayor's representative can can take back that that question, um they can. You know, provide a better update on the status of that program.
Perhaps. I think creativity and thinking outside the box and getting really creative to boost and market. New revenue and keep the revenue, keep businesses and local jobs here in Hawaii and keep locals here is paramount. With that being said, uh I look forward to your response next one. Okay, we're gonna move along. Is everybody from the community? Oh, can you please say that?
I went to the same meetings that you someone.
Sorry, can you um speak into a mic, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Um I had one time was a big proponent of the rail. Yeah, I saw what it did in my problem. Um what she said is very true. Uh initially, uh they came up with these programs. Try to help the businesses. The problem was it was another loan. It wasn't. Uh any uh other offers. Any business, we had to take another loan just to survive. A lot of those businesses went on. Uh the economics of uh what happened there um throws some business away that someone existed over thirty, forty years. I think the same thing is gonna happen in Kalihia. I went to cities. And I went with one of my friends to go to the restaurant. It's closed. I've been in Kalihia over sixteen years. Never saw it close. They laid off all the people. There's only two people who are working in there. What happens the next? All these people are laid off. I'm not, I'm not trying to point a finger at you specifically. But I'm saying I warned them before they came here. If the same thing happens in Waipahu, this will wipe out Kalihia. It's happened as we speak. You guys are not even halfway through. Uh I don't, I don't know what I'm gonna say. I really told you, but uh. You guys are gonna come up to have to come up something better than this. This would be ridiculous.
Thank you so much.
So I mean, it's part of a question, but also a comment. So the first thing was um. When you're talking about the SPOs and where they're positioned, they're positioned over here next to the county building. They're not positioned. Anywhere near where the where the issue actually happens, which is down, which would is the first ACC stop that's on Dillingham. That's number one. Number two is I want to also echo the comments of what they're talking about over here and in the sense of what it comes to pedestrians, because right now, the way that they have the roads. I mean, even in the the uh the brochures or whatever it is, those things, those info things that you guys email. Has no information really that is police like cogent when it comes to what pedestrians need to do. Persons who plan that need to actually be, what if I didn't know anything about walking from one side or the other side? How am I gonna get there if it's? This winding pathway of crossing from one side to the other side or whatever it is. It's very car-centric and this is a very, in terms of pedestrians, a lot of pedestrians in this area as well. We have about, and I'm just gonna just be real quick here. Federal government stipulates that twelve percent utilization of public transportation is a high utilization. We're at thirty percent over here. We have a high level of utilization. So when we think about something like that, we think about the pedestrians. There needs to be much better care when it comes to putting that. Now, I know it's not on you, Harry. But it is Heart and you are representing Heart right now. So I just want to bring it up.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the community? Anybody online? Thank you so much, Harry. I think you have a lot to work on for the next meeting. Moving along to filling of vacancies, we have two at-large seats available. Should we take a?
I I verified.
Want to speak to me? Hi, my name is Alin Vasquez Belacerna. Um I come from, I resigned from Maia as a neighborhood board member. Um I started here on Neighborhood Board fifteen in two thousand and nine. And I came full circle again. I'd like to come back here. Uh I've been on the neighborhood boards. From Neighborhood Board fifteen to Lily Ha and then I here for the past fifteen years. And I moved to Waipahu Apartments. Thank you.
I'll nominate, I'm sorry, what is your name?
My name is Alin.
Um for uh to be a member of this board, so.
We love veterans. Yes. You say you can give you a vote for, say your name and then. Oh Lynn?
Yes.
Love that.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Her name. Liosa?
Yes, Lynn.
Ken?
Yes, Lynn?
Doris?
Yes, Lynn.
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes, Lynn.
Cards?
Yes, Lynn.
Lloyd?
Yes, Lynn.
Angela?
Um point of personal privilege before I say yes. There's another nominee that I wanted to nominate. Will this affect that nominee? So, yes.
Yes, Lynn. You have to say the name.
Yes.
Okay.
Amanda?
Yes, Lynn.
Thank you so much.
Not better, though.
So welcome, Lynn.
Thank you so much, dear.
The top things, Angela. You did mention that you have someone in mind that you'd like to nominate for the present?
Yes.
Okay, who is the nominee?
I'd formally like to nominate Shirley Templo to be a board member of Neighborhood Board Number Fifteen. I solemnly swear that this nomination.
Just nominate, you're nominated.
Okay. I second.
And Shirley, do you accept?
Yes, all.
Yeah.
And have us. Would love to see it.
So please fill us up first and last name for the record and then a little bit about yourself.
Aloha, everyone, and good evening, Chair, Board members. My name is Shirley Templo, and I was born and raised here in Kalihii. My family have lived here all my life and currently live in the neighborhood. So I have a deep connection to want to empower the people of my neighborhood. And this is a good starting ground to fight for what is right and have a voice within the community. So with your grace, you'll be honored to represent the community and our neighbors. Thank you.
Yay. Thank you very much. Let's take a brief for yourself.
Yeah. Hi, girl. Yes.
Five-minute recess.
Yeah. I love it.
So the microphone.
Thank you, my dear.
I'm gonna add you on.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
They technically weren't there. So they, they.
Welcome.
Back in session. Okay, so I think we have first and second Shirley, so welcome Shirley.
Yeah, I'm Shirley, overall.
Okay, now we're gonna go roll call. So please say her name, and yes.
Oh.
This is for Shirley.
Evelyn. Yes to Shirley. Diosa.
Shirley, yes.
Ken.
Shirley, yes.
Doris.
Shirley, yes.
Eric.
Shirley, yes.
Card. Shirley, yes. Lloyd.
Uh, yes, Shirley.
Angela.
Yes, I do.
Shirley, yes. And Lynn.
Shirley, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
It's like, I've been for a long time. Okay, we're gonna move it along to presentation. Sorry, we're gonna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll shake you for it. We're gonna take a two-minute break.
Shirley, are you below limits?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm Democrat street.
Yeah, yeah. So now below limits is well represented here.
Yes. Put security watch out.
Oh, yeah.
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 I know. So we actually have a public safety committee in the area.
Let's get it.
Angela.
Yes.
And you did actually put down your sign, please.
Oh.
Behind.
Love Life Choose Life sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a political sign.
It's a political sign.
It's so much church, I think. Pink, purple, and white plants at this. Um, orange.
I saw these where.
I started here for many years ago when I was. I invited to to recess.
I forgot the water tap for one night. I know, I remember the years. Before COVID.
When we had COVID, we had, when people could get their camera on. Like, oh, they're guys. They, they, they were getting frustrated because they couldn't be, they were here, but they couldn't.
I'm ready.
Hey, red board, we convene. So welcome Shirley. And welcome Lynn.
Thank you.
Our board's finally full, so thank you so much for your participation. Uh, we're gonna skip to presentations for ECLU, uh, they will be on next month's agenda. Next, board business, a proposed Neighborhood Board boundary change of Neighborhood Board Number Thirteen downtown and Neighborhood Board Number Fifteen Kalihii Palama by Chair Ernest Carvalho, Neighborhood Board Number Thirteen.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I move, I'm moving further, I'd like to say congratulations Shirley and Lynn. And that means I know a lot of you guys on this board already. They've got a great board here, but what's up with this man over here?
So we know.
He only comes over to my phone when he wants potatoes. Yeah, that's it. But you guys got a great board, um, glad to be here tonight. So this is just a discussion about the Neighborhood Board boards, yeah? Um, Neighborhood Board is moving towards reconstruction borders. But we as board members, boards, can we construct our boards if both boards agree to it according to the Neighborhood Board plan? We don't have to wait for them to get to their years or three years down the road to make those discussions. So I want to just open it up for discussion basically tonight. I am born and raised in Kalihii. I was, um, when I lived in Kauai House, and so I went to Kalihii, Kalakaua, Parenton, I call it the tri-fer. So I know the whole area. As a kid, as a kid, we used to ride our trend bike up and down this road, there used to be a trend shop up here. But the way that we were raised and how we were taught about the area, right? Once you come down to Dillonham, and basically from Alakaua, which was all family area back in days, yeah? That was all part of the Evilay Chinatown area. And then once you hit the, um, Main Street and it turned over to Liliyah, everything ever of Liliyah, memorizing all that, was part of Kalihii and everything died in it. Where, um, all the, um, way, way in eyes. To the freeway, where there it is, was all part of Chinatown. So I would definitely want to read something real quick about this board's rules and this would be real quick. Um, this was sent by, sent to me by a member who's in your, um, district at this time, yeah? So basically, um, what it says, um, before LBJ, Great Society, and Urban Renewal, the boundaries of Chinatown went to Liliyah, mark up to School Street, to New O'Wano and the waterfront. Hundreds of mostly wooded buildings were demolished during the nineteen seventies to make way for new houses such as Pukui Gardens, Queen Emma, expanded Forester Gardens, for instance. The downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board boundary should extend to Liliyah with marker boundaries of Vineyards or now H One. This would mean parts of Dillonham to Casco. And me thirteen would then include Evilay Road to its junctions with Nimitz. Those streets intersecting with Evilay Road, IHS Salvation Army, OHA, and course, Dual County Complex. And the reason for the change is technically, uh, Amanda, Ms. Inez, Chair Inez, she already knows that whilst that we grew up back then, we knew what the boundaries were back then, and this was the bounds sent to us. So this was all, that was all family. In Chinatown, in Chinatown, we're working hard. I don't just sit down as a chair. I actually am on the ground working. I work with drug addicts, I work with mentally ill, and I help, and it's a hard thing. So every time we move three, four steps forward, we go backwards. And the biggest reasons we go backwards is because I cannot, as we say, and we said, smoke the head of the snake. Means I can't chop off that head of the snake, because the head of the snake happens to reside within the IHS and all those areas. And you guys boundary, and I'm, I've talked to Ken about this when he was, um, Chair. But what we can do to help it out, because I know you guys got a big area and all that. So a lot of time, this area is not focused on as much.
Sound of furrows.
Right, but you know, so, but you guys, I mean, we're definitely bored and great to get to know you guys. But these are the boundaries that we're asking for, but we're not asking, don't get scared. We're asking you guys to discuss this and to listen to the residents also of the areas and the communities and see what they have to say, just discuss this and let's see where we go. This is gonna be an open dialogue between both Neighborhood Board Fifteen and Neighborhood Board Thirteen. And we'll come to a compromise that is workable with everyone. So it's not like we're gonna pick your name, you know, everything best. We just want to come to a compromise to see where we feel comfortable starting this.
Perfect, just start with.
Right, to start with this guy, that's where the road goes. So is there anyone on the board that has any questions about this?
I'd like to speak to that for IHS, that, that's, um, and Allah Park, again, the peripherals of Kalihii. Kalihii is very vast, has many issues and concerns, many challenges, and many promising things that takes all of our attention, including the politicians that represent us and the community members that live with us. But that being said, the Allah Park, Evilay area, IHS, Salvation Army, has a lot of energy and time that needs to be focused on that area, especially for the homeless, mentally ill, and those who suffer from substance abuse, and those that are in combination upon that. With that being said, for me personally, for that area that I just spoke about, Allah Park, Salvation Army, and IHS, because those shelters service that area and those people that are homeless for whatever reason that's caused them to be as such. It would behoove me to allow Chinatown to help and assist, because I have seen you walk that community. It takes a lot of time. I have not walked that community, because I'm concerned for everything.
Go ahead.
Yes, no, 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 I'm listening, I'm, my mind is.
So that, that's my thing is, for that area, it would be good for Chinatown, just for me, my thoughts right now at this moment for that, and I open it up to the rest of the board.
Uh, um, are you trying to hint at merger possibly? Or, um, just adopting that mentioned area?
Well, if we were to merge, you know how big that this would be? What I'm trying, yeah, I, I don't think, because like I said, you've got a lot going on, especially with Amazon and everybody else coming in. So what we're to, we want to go back to the original borders of what Chinatown was. And if you compare to the circle of this piece right now, then down the future, there's more time to talk about other parts of it. But especially what Chair just alluded to. I, I walk these areas and we can make a big difference, Chinatown, people in Chinatown can, because there's a team that we have put ourselves in different positions throughout Chinatown, and we work these areas, you know? And we, we're bringing in, um, Freemasons, so we're bringing in our masons to actually do nightly walks, and we're not talking about a walk once a month, we're talking about three to four times a night. We do this walk to help. And so very much, we're gonna do this in a compassionate, but as compassionate as it's gonna be, it has to have tough love mixed in with that. Because not everything is for free. So just for instance, myself, I'm a veteran. And my story will come out on several beat, um, in a couple of days. But I'm a veteran, but as a veteran, like most veterans, I wasn't vetted out correctly, and I ended up on the streets. I fought for over ten years on those streets. I did not get into the drugs and alcohol like others did, but because the rail was great. But I saw what happened and how people were terrorized. But in the end, I do know that until people take responsibility for themselves and say, I want out, they'll never get out, and they'll continue to use the same excuses as long as we continue to bleed, and I hate to use this word, bleeding parts. At some time, we have to stop, and we have to say, no, these are what needs to be done. We're gonna help, we need you to help yourself. We can't help anybody if they don't want to help. But I believe that the team that we've now put on, and a lot of the team members that we've got, and not even board members, yeah? But because of people that have associated, I brought many people into my home, their houses mentally ill. At one point, I had like over seventy bibles, and I only had one bible left, because they would all be written bibles. Um, you know, it's not forcing them or anything, but it's trying to help them find a connection. And we've got people get into homes and everything else. And then especially with veterans, I would send them over to your vet and have them help. But I believe that we in Chinatown have a bigger play with IHS, Salvation Army, and that until we can handle and take full control of this area, Chinatown can never truly awaken and rejuvenate like we said, and it can, and it will happen. But I need your guys' support, and I need an open discussion whatsoever.
Yeah, I would like to say that I support, uh, this, uh, because, you know, understanding like where Dillonham and Evilay is. You know, I never really considered this part of Kalihii. And it's really important because, you know, depending on IHS, usually whenever I see homeless going, taking the bus and everything, usually downtown Chinatown. And not that Kalihii people can go to, you know, IHS, at the women's shelter. But there are more homeless, I would say, that I see in downtown Chinatown more than, you know, Kalihii. So I think it's important that we send them over there and giving you the kulianna over us. Because we are there, we have, uh, we have other transitions, we have part right now. We have to understand what's going on with Far, we have to understand what's going on with some of the, uh, people, some of the citizens here that are currently having complaints about like, remember their water sewage? You know, feces coming up, and with Amazon transitioning to come over here, we need to know more about where their health is, so. You know, it feels nice that you're reading on the kulianna with IHS and hospital and that area.
Kalihii has a lot of responsibility for win.
Okay, you can go first. So, um, I know you was mentioning, do we have like a visual of what that would look like? Just to see, um, uh, what the, what you're talking about in terms of the, the plan? Uh, so just, uh, one question.
Yeah, so, so what we're gonna do, we just wanted to open this up to discussion. We'll have a full map and everything out for the next meeting together.
Um, just, and just on the housekeeping side, so historically, we had what's called a special cooperative zone that we had an original resell that wasn't put in the proper, though it's on our website. So that showed that we have cooperation from that part. Um, our area is not by IHS, it's H Three R C, has a RFP for this area. IHS has some of the buildings, but H Three R C is the one that controls this area.
We're talking about board lines?
Yeah.
Sorry, just to reiterate what, um, what Ellen said. So are you proposing that we adopt it, that area, or we merge as a, as a whole?
I think, I think it's for them to allow for them to have IHS Salvation Army and Allah Park here.
Yeah, and be incorporating to our, um, yeah.
Erwin?
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate your story and your service is amazing, and, and I like learning about the history of it, but, you know, I think I might be the only descending voice here, it just because I, I think I recall a little bit. Um, let me preface this by saying I would love more cooperation, I would love it if we could work together on these issues, but my concern lies in, you know, I, since I've been on this board, it's, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, oh, we're improving Chinatown, we're, we're moving things out, and you said you want to chop the head off the snake. What I've seen in the past, it seems, is that chopping the head off the snake for Chinatown seems pushing homeless into Kalihii. And so my concern is, uh, and especially we see this, you know, I remember in twenty twenty-two with the River of Life moving here. Um, you know, I read the, in the paper, all these quotes from Chinatown businesses, oh, they're not, they're not around our businesses, they're not defecating on our sidewalks, well, they're here now. And I recall that we were not, and I know you talked about cooperation last time. I don't recall anyone consulting our board about the River of Life move, but it was very much consulted in your board. And so my concern is while we give this to you, you chop the head off the snake, but that head moves into our territory. And, and the, the lack of cooperation, the lack that I've seen so far in the more recent history continues, and we, and we don't get to work together. So I would rather keep it, and I would love to do walks with the Lions, uh, not the Lions, the Freemasons and.
I'm gonna go there, so you can go there.
You know, I mean, I would love to do that as opposed to just give up our area, because it seems like when we give it up, it's just we, we just gain more homes.
Okay, so to address that. So technically, that was all Chi, that is all Chinatown and Chinatown. People, I have more emails and phone calls coming from fifteen North King Street, which is in Kalihii Palama area, but it's actually Chinatown, it's right there by the river. Have more, um, calls from the resident managers and the managers all over the senior, um, senior residents base here, which is also in Chinatown, Allah Park is Chinatown. This is what Chinatown was, born and raised, so I'm saying, I'm not trying to bring more people, more homeless into your place. So when I'm looking at doing what I'm doing, it's not just gonna happen at one time, because we have to build an infrastructure. That infrastructure must include, uh, rehabilitation centers for the mentally ill, and that must include, um, drug and alcohol centers that must come up to help us with that. But what we want to do is, this is actually, the areas that you guys just described is actually Chinatown.
Well, it's actually not, though, right?
No, it, it's actually, so it is, it is actually Chinatown. You guys, um, the Neighborhood Board did not, and we're not the only Neighborhood Board, there's other Neighborhood Boards.
But for the sake of Neighborhood Board, it's not Chinatown.
For the sake of Neighborhood, yeah.
I feel what Ernest is trying to see, historically.
Yeah, and I, and I hear that, and I, and I hear the repeat, but I want to hear your, your comment or your response to what I saw as a lack of cooperation regarding the River of Life, the more pushing of homeless people. You go and talk and you kind of repeated your points, and I appreciate that, I just want an answer to that. Why, why are you resistant to cooperation? Why do you want it, the area, as opposed to cooperating with the subjects? And I remember last time you also said that people come to you like you just did, and you refer them to us. I don't recall any reference coming to this board saying that they went to Chinatown first. So I would like to address that before we start seeding territory.
Well, after I, I had made a comment to your chair about, um, people calling, made a comment to, uh, Ken.
So refer the first, that'd be great, so.
So the thing about it is, now, these people are like, well, we're in Chinatown, we live in Chinatown, homeless. And, and so that's, it's a pullback, and as far as River of Life goes, which, which, River of Life was in Chinatown, right?
Right, correct.
And I have no problems with River of Life, and we've asked that. River of Life, we asked, um, all the other people, they come here from, um, Kukua and all that, reach out to, um, Kalihii Palama because they are our neighbors. So we have asked them to reach out. Whether they reach out or not, that was, that's all the priority to take. We can ask them to reach out, which we did, but if they didn't reach out, I do apologize. And there's, there's nothing I can do at that point, because the responsibility.
I'll interject a little bit. Ernest, Kalihii, there's not a piece of this island I have not walked on. Okay? But that being said, everybody's opinions and views and history, and what you bring forth and bring out into the community is important. If Ernest has given the time and the energy, then so be it, because I have fun, I don't, I'm everywhere else. If he's walking it, then let him walk. That's just my view, I'm not saying to see it or not, but just putting in the time and effort, and many people are, helping. But just putting in the time and effort and many people are helping, because that's his career.
Are we open to having a committee on homelessness and then make a decision on whether or not we would like to redistrict his requested area? Are you guys open to something like that?
Yeah.
This is what this is about, opening up. I respect where you're coming from on this.
And you've done a lot of good work, for sure.
He's done a lot of good work, everybody here has.
We were born and raised in Kaliki, I don't know, as a little kid. We didn't need, we didn't need cover or anything. We used to ride down from the time, especially on the weekends, on our bicycles and we stayed out till the lights. So once the lights went on, we went home. If we went home, we get livid.
But also growing up, you have to admit, this is kind of feels like a forgotten district. And so I don't want to, I would love to cooperate is my point. I would prefer cooperation with you over seeding.
Everybody here cares a lot.
There's, um, there, um, there's no problem with that, if that's what we want. I have no problem with that.
We haven't decided.
I, I have to side with him on this simply because we end up becoming the dumping zone. So just based off of that, I, I have to totally agree what he's saying, let's have some sort of collaboration rather than.
Cause we gotta protect our own, right? I mean, if we keep it, we can protect our own, and that's kind of our.
Same as we didn't see what had happened, they protected certain areas and then we became the dumping zone.
I remember, I remember that.
So.
People often stay in one district, they move around.
Because they, they are being helped.
But they can be encouraged to move, but I think it seems.
People move around, human beings move around.
Right, and.
But the homeless population, they tend to stay where their tents are. They go around somewhere else to some activities, they should be, and they go back to where they planted their seeds. I want this to take up the whole time. I do agree with Shirley, this is just an open discussion, it has two each. Nobody's forcing any idea on either.
Would anybody be open to chairing the homelessness committee?
I think when we get to the, yeah, let's, okay.
There's a part in the committee we could.
Yeah, so. This is just an open discussion, get this talking, yeah. And I respect everybody's side and my understanding of what's coming from. Especially, eh, Kalik, I am Kalik, well, born and raised, I will be.
Yeah, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, because you could be somewhere else.
No, I, I was actually supposed to be.
Give the community input.
Thanks, honey.
Yes, central community. In the Google Drive, as you know, board members, um, you guys already added, so you guys actually can go in to, um, to our. They call it our Google Drive. Um, there is that file that was added, um, regarding those border changes. So information is that, so.
And when you look at that, that is just an idea, we can always change borders. You know, we can always say, you can't say, no, we want this and want that, we just, yeah.
We're gonna look at it, okay?
Yeah, yeah, great.
Okay. My name is Janet Josh, I live on Edilei. At the Edilei Senior Apartments. And I think that the people who live there should be consulted about which district they feel are part of. I feel that we are part of Chinatown. Um, and I, I just do not feel that we are a part of Kaliki. It's just, it's just, that's the way it is. And, uh, so I think that we should be consulted. And, you know, in, in these decisions. That there are several, there, there's the, uh, two fifteen, King Street. And there's our apartments, and that's basically the residents that you're talking about in that area. That's, there's nobody else but us, um, and the homeless. And we have to, uh, we have to coordinate on, I, I was, I, I have worked. As a community outreach worker in California, and I have worked with the homeless. And I have worked with drug and alcohol people. And Ernest has it right. We, we have to use the, the carrot and the stick. That's all I want to say.
I think if you're honest, thank you for coming here. I will be reaching out to you to get your contact information though. Thank you so much.
I think he wanted to say something.
Did anybody else want to say something? Well, come, come to the, so we can hear what you have to say.
Uh, it's one of the worst, I, I guess the confusion I have on Bush, he was saying that, well, there was certain. Is it Salvation Army or River of Life that had issues, right? Is that?
No, we told River of Life, I advised River of Life. And we advised everyone for River of Life moved out of Chinatown. But we've advised them that they need to contact Kalipalama and we would like them to contact Kalipalama because they are neighbors. And not only Kalipalama, but Liliha. Because they are neighbors, huh? Before anything was done by itself, and they're right. These organizations never got a vote of them. These organizations, they only come to Chinatown because they feel they're in our, so.
But the other issues, uh, you know, ACLU, they, they, they step in, uh, trying to look for, I guess, everybody's rights. But when they step in a lot of times because of their power, their connection. They seem to overlook the people who live in the area versus the people who are just transitioning. They, they just move in and out. So yeah, which is, what, what, what was the?
So the ACLU passed injunction, but the trial will be in September. So technically, like, um, this offer from Tennessee, they say, they can now, they can remove people off of the, um, streets that are sitting there. But there is still that period between eleven and five that they can say, right? But yeah, this is just, open discussion to move forward, hasn't it? And their.
It's just still meeting.
We're, we're moving. Your residents have immediate concerns?
No, yeah.
Or did I miss the?
You're, you're missing.
Well, I'm sorry.
So this is my resolution, uh, resolution to support Universal Community College. Um, there's not much to add from last month. Uh, there was a bill regarding a working group that did pass, uh, higher education and technology. So we can look more into our possibilities of having universal community college. I don't know where, which community that is in town because I'm stuck in college, so. But, uh, you know, as someone that has gone to community college, I think it's really important, uh, especially since my alma mater is right there. Uh, I do want to see more students enroll and we have seen an increase enrollment this year. Uh, especially from Filipinos and, uh, Micronicians, which is integral within our community. So by giving them, uh, free exchanges, you know, I think that will up our chances of, you know, showing that we are the working class neighborhood. And we do deserve an education. We do deserve to be up in there. That's it.
Good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Um, so I do support free education, or at least a discounted education. For those that are residents of Hawaii, to keep people who have a degree affordable. Because otherwise they're going to move to the mainland, so I do support that, thank you so much, Priests.
Question, how do we circulate the resolution to this?
Not the, you, uh. Are you?
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the other news. Circling them. Moving on, thank you so much.
Vote, be serious.
I'm gonna.
Would you want to make a copy? Yeah, you need to take a vote in order for this to actually be, certainly related to people that you want. But does everybody, did everybody?
Did everybody get a chance to look at the resolution?
Especially of the two new, uh, members. So you should.
We'll do it.
Next, next time, make sure, um, bring, um, hard copy.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move it along to residents and community concerns.
Hello, my thoughts, my name is Darsha Lee and I'm here as a, on behalf of Saint Elizabeth's Episcopal Church in Kaliki. Um, as some of you know, our priest retired at the end of last year. So we're taking the time to go to our community partners and connect and reconnect with, uh, people in our community. And, um, for this sport specifically, we did receive some of the offline comments. So we did want to, um, we have some contact cards. We wanted to make sure that we had a way for this board to have clear, transparent communication with our, um, church. Um, and then we also wanted to highlight to, for all of our community members, our goal in the community is definitely to meet. The immediate needs of people in the community, so that's our Puna, our Teke, our House of Folk. Um, and this is more of our immediate concerns and those are usually our basic needs. Um, and wanted to really separate those out into three different categories. We have immediate concerns, which is what we typically address to take off the pressure from our emergency departments. Um, places like the police department, places like our clinics. And that's separate from agencies that work with long-term solutions, so like Anton Truckee. Definitely addressing those chronic homeless persons. That's a very big overwhelming project that does take lots of people. And that's different from first safety concerns, which we very much a hundred percent support having safe and healthy communities. Um, and that's with our community policing teams, that's with, you know, us making, um, commitments to have drug-free and, uh, non-violent basis. So we are a hundred percent committed to that. Um, I'm happy to talk about any of the outreach that we did do at our church, um, from our Wally House to, um, prom, um. Our prom collection to our school supply drives. Um, I'm happy to talk about that, but today what we really wanted to highlight was on March twenty-fourth, with our neighbor Kamakapili Church. We are having a, um, a recommitment to our zone and it's being a space for non-violence and for a drug-free zone. Um, and it's being led by Gidget the Donkey. So all of the members of the community are welcome to come, it's very family-friendly and it's with our neighbors, um, in the area. I'm, I'm now open for any questions, concerns, comments that you'd like the community to take back to the board.
Any questions from the board, what time is that at?
It's at nine, eight, well, our service is at nine AM, so after the service.
So ten, around ten thirty?
I think the procession will be first.
Five, nine AM.
Nine AM?
Nine AM.
That's March twenty-fourth, you said.
March twenty-fourth.
At the church.
At the church, um, right for Kamakapili, we share that nice little. We'll be there with Gidget the Donkey.
I gotta say, what, it's a stupid question, Gidget the Donkey, Gidget the Donkey?
Gidget.
It's a. It's a. It's a, it's a dog, dog.
Real dog.
It's an actual dog?
I forgot to bring a lot of flyers, like, I asked our church minister to put up a flyer, um, I'll just pass this around. I'll pass around to you. Um, so I hope that's posted on our website.
It's a real donkey. So I like cute.
I think, um, Kaka Kaleo, who used to be at.
I was thinking of the, like, you know, some animal.
His family also has a company called Panihodol. And they actually have little, maybe a dollar's try now. We wanted to take the flyer, you know, to some of the neighbor, uh, like, the housing to make this something really fun for families and kids. And, uh, like Darsha said, with the, the violence free, the violence-free and drug-free zone, we're actually getting, um, metal signs that we're going to be posting. Um, at the front, the back of Saint Elizabeth's, thanks. And then also, um, we, uh, Kaka Kaleo has been going to the different, um, businesses, like Tomashiro Market, et cetera. To get them to sign on and commit to being part of this drug-free, um, violence-free zone. So the procession will be fun, Kamakapili, the neighborhood, our parishioners will meet, will do a procession, um, led by the donkey around the neighborhood. And then, uh, we'll go back into our respective, uh, you know, Kamakapili and Saint Elizabeth's, we'll go back to do our regular, um, home Sunday service. But have the donkey there because for the kids to take pictures, kids and family. But we make Darsha.
So nice, cute.
As each is listed as the contact on your, well.
What time does your job at then?
Um, Angela, did you have a question?
They went like a rabbit.
Angela, did you have?
No, it wasn't stupid.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the church's work with the homeless. Um, and because the city and the state provides the emergency response teams, um, such as the crisis outreach and, um, crisis outreach response engagement team. Um, and also the state provides the Department of Human Services, um, the SNAP food stamps benefit to the homeless. And then the church provides, um, the compassionate care.
Angela, there's another question for the church, this is part of community concerns, do you have a community concern?
Oh, okay, well, I actually wanted to ask a question about the church and also about River of Life.
No, but they're not doing a presentation, those are community concerns, so we can't ask a question to a community concern. But, you know, or do you have a question about the announcements, we can post that up online.
Uh. Okay, I will present. Is it okay?
Do you have a community concern, Angela, that's the question?
Can I present? I have a community concern.
Okay, what is your community concern?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's already running your.
Yeah, we got a minute, it's like fifteen right now.
Okay, so aloha, um, neighborhood board number fifteen. Um, Angela Melody Young, on behalf of CARES, um, a grassroots. So, um, our community concern, um, is about the same, um, public policy proposals that I presented in the last few sessions. Um, and it's important to focus on the subject matters I've been going over, um, as CARES advocates for public policy and as we work with different teams. So our CARES advocacy is published, um. For public consumption for everybody across the state. And it was originally published at the Hawaii Children and Youth Summit, um, and event charter into law in nineteen ninety-four to provide support to advise the Keke Caucus proposals. Um, and so I hope this is relatable, especially because now we have two board members that were involved in the Hawaii Children and Youth. And for those who are not in the audience last time, um, these CARE policy proposals ask the children what's important to them. Um, and what.
Thirty seconds.
So this is about the filmmaking and music industry, which I didn't go over yet, and also the environmental protection, um, laws. So this shows you the damage of, um, environmental pollution. And also it raises awareness about an extended producer's responsibility law, um, which states that the.
Wrap it up.
Burden should not be upon the taxpayers to, um, hold the responsibility.
We're good. Can you please post it online though?
Okay.
You know, somebody will see it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait to show the, oh, if anybody else.
From the community?
Yes, then.
My name, my name is Dana, yeah. I'm from actually, uh, Kalikali. But, um, last time I came, I presented, was online, this was a parade, the Kalikali Business Parade. So I just tried to promote stuff that's happening in Kalik. And so like this weekend starts the play at Barrington, Kopek, and it'll apply over there. And it's this Friday and Saturday and Sunday. And it's, uh, seven thirty on Friday nights and it's two o'clock at Friday. Then the other one that I had, and I'll, this one is later on in March thirtieth. It's, uh, the Easter egg, um, Easter egg on Ed Camp Field, uh, Canadian Fields across Bishop Museum. Starts at nine thirty for kids three to twelve. And seeing that we have to do everything online, so we want to get a number of, get people registered online so they can figure out how many people are coming. That's basically the two things that I wanted to present and.
Dana, when's the Easter end?
The thirtieth, well.
Thirteen.
At nine thirty.
And we can post that information online.
Okay. Yeah, I was talking to the city people and they said, uh, they couldn't because they were for the city again.
Hmm, yeah. And people going to their Google Drive, the Neighborhood Board Google Drive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to see you. Thanks.
Smart.
Thanks for that.
Any, anybody else from the community? Any community concern? Anybody online? None of them? Okay.
Okay, I'll go. Yeah. Right now, um, so this is, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that I've seen. So, you know, we had a lot of things that were brought up, especially when it came to cars and car safety, because I've seen a lot of vehicles where they don't even have their lights on in the morning and in the night. And as pedestrians, that's something that's very dangerous because we can't see vehicles. So, you know, use that platform here to have the three minutes of, you know, please, if you have a vehicle, please consider the pedestrians on it, especially for an area like Dillingham over here, where there's a lot of things in terms of which way we have to go. Second thing is, thank you for bringing up about the community college. I really do think that the community college here needs to have a greater connection with Barrington High School. It's a great feeder, I think personally, it's something they wanted to try to look at. From before, there was an EMT program, for example, that the school has, but that feeds out to, to inward. Um, there's a study that was conducted to which that, uh, they could actually do actually an extension of that program over here. Because we're gonna need, I think that's about double the amount of capacity for what the mayor was saying in terms of the EMT. And, and the amount of amulets that we're gonna have. Plus, the, the headquarters is gonna be over here. Next part is, um, about the promise program. I mean, I mean, how you wanted to do that. Um, look forward to seeing what that was going to look like. But also, we talked about homelessness. And I've always approached homelessness in this manner, and I'm sure what we preached in the part here, is we have people who are there because of a matter of circumstance. They lost their job, the, the rent got, you know, increased or squandered, so forth, right? Those are the ones that we could maybe benefit when it comes to, uh, you know, counseling or other things like that, right? We can immediately deal with those situations. We have those who are cognitively deteriorated, either by drugs or other things like that. Those are harder individuals to deal with. And in some cases, if we don't deal with the people who are on the circumstance, they will end up in that area. The next one is a criminal, uh, is a criminal element. The criminal element will predate upon those who are kind of deteriorated, get them to do their bidding, work and so on and so forth. And then the next one is stubborn individuals who just want to live on the front of society. So, you know, just that, I, that out in vision, um, if there is, uh, that community that would be on there, be more than willing to, to help with that other than that, and give them our insurance.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna move along. I think I did miss something here on the agenda. Shame on me. Approval of minutes.
Okay.
Anybody second?
A second?
Minutes adopted. Thank you so much. All right.
Any correction?
Any corrections? No? No, thanks. Okay, next. Stay in the next official, starting with Carl Rhodes.
Here on behalf of Senator Carl Rhodes, my name is Peyton Mitchell, and here's the report he's prepared for, uh, this meeting. So last week, the Department of Health reported six hundred and fifty-nine new COVID cases with a, um, sorry, the seven-day average is, uh, changed, but, um, the current seven-day average is ninety-six cases and thirteen deaths for that weekly period. Uh, Senator Rhodes encourages everyone to stay up to date on their COVID shots as well as their flu shots. And if you're over the age of sixty, there is now a new vaccine for respiratory sin-stil virus, uh, SISH virus, uh, it's also known as RSV, uh, which is a good idea to get. Second point he would like to, um, bring up is that he's received numerous complaints for feral chickens. Uh, and the community, uh, as in the past, um, he would use some of his campaign funds to help address the feral chicken concern. Uh, those are the only two things we'd like to bring up to this board meeting. Uh, if there are any questions for the senator, I can jot them down and bring them back to his office.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Any questions online?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Angela.
Okay, yes, I have a question about, um, the feral chickens and the trapping process, um, for the feral chickens. Um, I was wondering, um, so in the Filipino culture, it's okay to have chicken fights. Um, and yet in other cultures, that is animal cruelty. So when the law that was worked on at the state level that I think appropriated funds and gathered the team from the city um, to implement a state resolution to trap the feral chickens, um, is it humane? Because, you know, even though chickens are nuisance, we still have to care about if it's a humane strategy or not to trap and get rid of the chicken.
I'm not sure what the relation is to cockfighting, um, but I do know that there are standards in place for how, uh, chickens have to be captured, I guess, or restrained. Um, I don't know what the standards are. I know there's a particular company we work with um, that handles both feral pigs and feral chickens. Uh, I can get that information back to you at the next board meeting.
Thanks.
Oh.
Anyone?
Right? Oh, it's on the middle. I think there's over there. Is there any more questions?
No.
Thank you so much. Moving along, please, Angela, remember Kim?
Hello, my name is Rachel. I'm reporting for Senator Kim's office. Um, I have a couple follow-ups from last month um, relating to the feral chickens. Um, it was asked, what is the difference between catching feral, feral cats versus feral chickens? Um, you know, we haven't really been asked to pursue a feral cat program, um, because we do get a lot of constituent requests and complaints about feral chickens. So that's kind of more, um, priority. Um, there's also many animal advocacy groups that do care for feral cats, um, and would probably be very vocal unlike feral chickens. Um, I was also asked if Senator Kim is pursuing legislation to expand the EMT program at HCC. Um, so in these situations, state mandate or legislation is not necessarily always the answer. And if the university deems it necessary to expand its own programs, um, they should do so. However, I did speak with the Vice President of Community Colleges today and, um, or their office, rather, and they confirmed that there is currently discussion to expand the EMT program. Um, nothing is set in stone yet, but they are working out some like logistical things such as office and classroom spacing. Um, moving on to this month's business, I did send the community report to board members. Um, being that we do have a couple new board members, I asked that you guys please send me your email addresses so that I can be sure to include you guys on the circulation. Um, as well as I had Lloyd Jottedown last month was also appointed. Um, didn't get his email yet. Um, the community report highlighted a couple of bills that Senator Kim introduced. A couple that she wants you to be aware of are, um, SB two four zero one. This appropriates more funds to the city and county to expand their feral chicken control program. Um, and this is the result of that working group resolution passed last session, as kind of mentioned by Angela. Another is a weed whacker bill, um, that's SB three zero one one. There's already a law in place that restricts leaf blowers, um, only allowing them to operate between eight AM and six PM on weekdays. So this basically just includes weed whackers since they're just as much of a nuisance. Um, in the community report, there was a brief, um, Red Hill update. I know you guys were asking Board of Water Supply about that earlier. Um, the Joint Task Force confirmed they removed a hundred and four million gallons of fuel and they are now working on residual fuel. Tomorrow evening, um, we're gonna be attending the final Joint Task Force meeting um, before it moves on to the Navy Closure Task Force. So we'll have, um, more of an update for you next month, as I'm sure Board of Water Supply will. And that's it for myself.
Righty, any questions from the board?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Angela.
Okay, so, um, today in judiciary, we heard a series of animal cruelty bills. I'm wondering about the chicken pilot program. Um, and so this question is about the chicken pilot program and for consideration about cruelty. So, um, the cruelty bills, um, this, um, judiciary hearing tried to, um, put cruelty to animals in a higher class of felonies. Um, so at the congressional level, um, there is a federal law, um, so preventing animal cruelty and torture. Um, it was a bipartisan bill.
Angela, what's your question?
So my question is, how do we manage the balance of, um, responding to community concerns such as chickens running around? And then also humanely, as a strategy, trapping like chicken and disposing of it?
A trick of the buyer.
Um, okay, so I unfortunately am not well-versed in the judicial aspect of things. Um, Senator Kim is the Chair of the Higher Education Committee, so I could probably touch more on issues relating to UH. Um, I, I'm not sure about, um, you know, felonies versus misdemeanors. Um, I would probably recommend reaching out to Senator Rhodes' office, who just spoke. He is the Chair of the Judiciary Committee. Um, in terms of disposal of chickens, um, I know that Sandwich Isle Pest Solutions is the contracted company with the city and county. I would recommend you reach out to them, um, as they do say that they, you know, take care of the chickens in a humane way. I'm not sure what that entails.
Okay, um, thanks. Yeah, I think there was like an appropriation of funds, um, for the
Thank you so much, Angela.
Thank you.
All right, um, any questions from the community?
See anybody?
No, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, Senator, you play no kind? Richard.
No.
Okay. Hearing
My report is in.
Report is in? Okay, report is in. Thank you so much. Representative Daniel Hope? Nope, okay, no report. Representative Sonny Gannon?
I'm here. Hey, good evening.
Hello.
This is really like
Yes, the hot seat.
Um, my name is Sonny Gannon. There's a few familiar faces, a few new ones. I don't think I've had an opportunity to, uh, meet, hear you. Um, uh, I'm going into my fourth year here at the state legislature. Um, District Thirty includes Lower Kaliki, Pearl Harbor, Hickam, um, uh, basically from Polo Street, School Street on down. Uh, the district lines changed in twenty twenty as a result of redistricting. So a lot of the communities changed. So, uh, we, a lot who actually lost a seat, you know, they got, a lot of people moved out that side. And, um, town lost a seat to the west side. There's been some big changes. Um, this used to be, I, I actually picked up quite a bit of, uh, the area that was once um, handled by Representative Hope. So it's been a, yeah, twenty-nine, yeah. Um, but I wanted to come and thank you just to introduce myself, say hello, um, and um, just give you a heads up as to some of the things that are moving, like the bigger picture stuff that's happening at the legislature. Um, I'm on the Judiciary Committee, uh, the Water and Land Committee and, uh, Corrections and Military and Veterans Committees, uh, which helps because the district includes Pearl Harbor, Hickam. And, uh, we get to oversee a lot of the issues having to do with the Red Hill Water Crisis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as the representative from Senator Kim's office mentioned, uh, they have recently drained the tanks. Uh, that was a really big ordeal. That took a lot of push mainly by the community. So there've been several rallies and protests and marches and kids groups and international attention to kind of get this thing moved. So they actually like sped up that whole process. Uh, the next step is going to be handled by the US Navy. That's a cleanup step. And then that's the part where I think the state really needs to step up and make sure they're gonna do all that. Um, they're being continuing issues, longstanding issues going back decades in the district having to do with private roads. Uh, so we've got a few bills moving, uh, which mandate that counties manage private roads. So, um, roughly and throughout, uh, rural, like, actually, there are roads that were ones that went back to patients or big landowners, but they're now just going like quasi-public. And so we're trying to figure out how to do that. And so we're basically trying to force the county to manage them. Um, one of the big successes from the last few years was getting a sidewalk on Campore Road. So the kids were having real problems walking from, um, Burn Elementary to, uh, uh, Lena Bulleye and which is, you know, that street where it is. So for many years, people were asking for a sidewalk. So that was quite a bit of effort and a collaboration between uh, state and the counties to get a sidewalk. You know, kids were playing broader for years. Um, we're still working on getting Gulik done and Mokawea done, that's in the district. Uh, and working on things like speed bumps. These are kind of long haul things. So it's like, I, I Mr. Pintor is a, um, um, a former high school intern and now a permanent intern. Um, and so, uh, we talk about this all the time, like trying to get the Department of Transportation to move on these figures. Um, there have been some changes in the tax map key on Dillingham Boulevard as a result of the rail. So we've got some residents that they didn't pay their taxes on time. So now they're, uh, they've been, um, given tax IDs as commercial properties. Someone going back and forth from tax office, I was kind of overlooked. Um, the state is in a deficit this year. Uh, a few big, obviously, La Haina and that tragedy uh, meant that state had to pay out directly through the Department of Human Services, um, and other, uh, upfront things like, uh, like how we do with COVID or unemployment. Um, the state is upfront and then it waits for a reinvestment from feds. But that payment is around seven hundred million dollars.
Ooh.
Um, and there's around a three hundred million dollars, uh, bill due for, um, hazard pay for those who work in COVID, mainly in the DOE. So, um, as a result of that, there's a pretty vibrant conversation about whether or not we should dip into the rainy day fund. Um, how much is really gonna hurt? Uh, and because, as we all know, like inflation's gone up, food's gone up, rent's gone up, but, uh, you know, income in the state is the same. There's nobody's interest in raising taxes, too. Um, one of the big issues, uh, for DOE is their CIPs. That's, uh, the acronym is Capital Improvement Projects. So the Department of Education managed to lapse, uh, then failed to spend four hundred and sixty-eight million dollars statewide. So we've been going back and forth with them, trying to make sure that Barrington mainly gets around fifty-six million dollars worth of improvements. These are um, old things that we had asked for and my predecessor had asked for, as a matter of fact, that we thought were authorized and uh, they kind of dropped the ball on it. But we're trying to get this going. No promises. Um, like, no politicians happy about that. We're talking about housing, uh, around the state. So whether or not we should allow like ADUs accessory, um, swelling units uh, in other districts other than Kaliki. So, um, and it, it's kind of, we had a pretty vibrant debate on the floor about that. Um, it's kind of coming down to like the districts that have money versus the districts that don't. We're not, we're not, we're gonna put this. Um, on the screen, if you look up, uh, Kelly, can you pull it, post up to the top? Uh, this is the District Newsletter that's going out. So I articulated some of the stuff that I just tried to explain to you tonight. Um, the state is looking for workers. So if you are a qualified applicant, um, we just put in a QR code. Uh, the Honolulu Police Department is hiring. Um, we're especially looking for women. Uh, so women tend to be really excellent officers. No, but like, that's a good question. So, um, because women tend to de-escalate. And they tend to like look at a situation and not be like told something about it, you know? And a lot of times the people you work with like have behavioral issues, so they, women tend to be great officers, right? So we've got the QR code out there.
Yeah. Really? Yeah.
Um, and we've also tried to just get, uh, surveys. So I'm trying something new. Um, certainly people don't participate, but let's see if they do this time. Uh, like, on the conversations about should be different to the rainy day fund, because we're gonna debate this on the floor and I want to hear from And what should we do about the financial stability of Hiko, like Hawaii, it's like a company that's been going for 150 years. They are asking the legislature to make them solvent. By that, I mean make it so that they can start borrowing money again. Their stocks are bottomed out. They're basically a junk bond right now. So they can't trade on Wall Street. And that means they can't do some of the improvements that the legislature is requiring them. So they want us to spend like state tax dollars to make them solvent. I'm real iffy about it, but I want to hear from other folks. Of course, we have student success down there. What else we got? Some of the bills that we're working on, some of the bigger stuff. And then favorite thing is talking to the kids when they come to the legislature or going to go into schools and chatting about how you participate in being in democracy. I still practice law, so I still take calls. I'm stretched a little thin. We've got a three-month-old at home. But, you know, I still take calls. So if you really need a lawyer, maybe I can just talk to you for a minute about that or find somebody to help you. And yeah, that's me.
Um, as far as, oh, sorry.
I'm going to be passing the gavel to Cars. We'll be chairing the rest of the meeting.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Okay, Yosa first and then Evelyn and then, oh, that's a lot. Okay, Yosa first.
Hi, a question about the sidewalks and the projects in Gulik. By any chance, is there a list that is, has public, you have a public access to, to see who privately owns which road? Specifically Beckley Street?
It's all in the tax, tax map key, but Gulik is a county road.
But Beckley Street?
Beckley County.
So it's not privately owned at all?
No, the one that's up, it's like a, you know, like Beckley Place or whatever.
Beckley Place in the, the.
It's super funky throughout the whole neighborhood. It's all weird.
So Beckley Street specifically?
What you call it, a speed bumps there. There's going to be a big state fix on the overpass in the next few months. So watch out for Gulik.
Do you know what specifically they're working on Beckley Street? Or what priority list?
I got to check in with Mr. Dos Santos Stam. Maybe he's got an update.
Who's next?
I have a question.
Okay, Ken.
Sorry. So states front loading the money first, waiting for the feds to, to, to get it back, right? In terms of when you guys put up the 700 million? So is that, I'm coming upon Congress passed the budget or? Where are we with that?
Several things have already been authorized by the president. And it's kind of just, it's almost a paperwork thing, you know? Unfortunately, the legislative, like the clock, like waits for nobody, right? They're trying to figure out the budget as we wait for reimburse.
So you may go to special session or something like that.
We might, we might. We'd like to, we did that for COVID. Yeah. So, yeah, so that's up in the air. And that's why I'd like to hear from you folks. It's up in the air. We don't know yet.
Heatherling?
Hi. When you mentioned Lower Kalihii, does that include below limits?
Yes, so that was, that's the new part of the district, yeah.
Okay, okay. So my concern would be primarily towards that area. Being a resident my entire life, below limits. Maybe also for the other elected officials and the representatives, maybe they can chime in later when it's your turn. But I'm kind of concerned with Amazon being the most biggest box store in our district. I'm afraid for the safety for the residents. On my street, we have about 200 that reside there. 25 kids that go to school to traverse the area to and from school daily. The DOT H Harbor District Bstart is going to be relocated right next to Amazon. So with that stoplight at the bottom of Mokawea, to me, that leads to a lot of traffic anticipated in that area. Amazon did say that Egress is going to be on Santa and an access road, but I am sure that may not be 100% like that. With the DOT H, the Harvest Division moving away from the shoreline simply because of King Tides, they're moving a block away from where I'm at. And all of the traffic is going to be dangerous for us in our area. So I'm kind of concerned. I don't want it to turn into Alakala right here. This is all big box. One big box we can deal with. This entire street is big box. City, Bank of Hawaii. You know what's on Alakala. And it's a, it's a mess. It's a big mess. Just coming on this street. I don't want to even go to this street. I'm not a member of Costco simply because of that. So.
I think we've got more questions than answers right now.
Yeah. And then also.
I was, I was concerned about their lately practices. So I've been following their, the way they kind of come into communities and like, of course, they'll work really long hours and they like city union busting, you know? So I've been watching that. The traffic stuff, I've got a meeting with the new director of transportation. So I'll bring that up with him. This is, this is going to be like a, almost a statewide uncertainty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is a big one, right?
This is a big one.
Yeah.
Not only that, you know, Pasha practices. Calling big tractor trailers with their Pasha unlicensed vehicles from supposed to stay in their yard only, but they're going traversing limits, having it Sunday mornings. So I don't know if that's legit or they're trying to avoid or fireworks or whatnot.
You're going on Google Halli? Google Halli is like private. So they, like.
There are limits.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so they beat up a lot of the roads in Kalihii, so.
They're not licensed. They're not.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm trying to find a lot, a bunch of different places to get these roads fixed.
I'll keep it under a minute. No, I love the sidewalk on Campore. But my other question is, is about the private roads. I don't know much about that, but I know RAOA, which I think you walked before. Those are private roads that we own. I don't know what the impact would be on us if that's passed. Will they take over the utility structure? I don't know what, you know, what the bill.
I think you folks might be in some sort of like a housing agreement, right?
I'm honestly not sure.
I think you, I think the, Mr. Erwin lives in the new development off of Campore. Bottom, like, right, right?
Yeah, right on the edge of your district.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So so I think that you guys are all one landowner. So if that's the case, then you might be under like a different agreement, right?
Okay, so we might not be affected.
Yeah, you're affected. Like, it's more like the something like, like Richard Lane going up, you know, like Full Money around there. A lot of these like places that used to be like just one house at the end, 100 years ago, and now there's like 15 houses and and the sewer lines have not caught up. It's like, in places here in town, you know, it's like they just made them like they had to, right? But like Kalihii managed to like skate by for decades.
Well, thank you. I remember that the state law that they were trying to, I know that was from the Senate side. I think it was Senator Caro, in terms of the state trying to buy out or some of the private roads or so. In this case, it's more like the county or the state's trying to direct the counties to take over the private roads and bring them up to county code.
I think, I think county would make more sense because county does the drought, the the fire, the, you know, the stuff that you would associate with.
But then the state would use like general funds in order to help with them, with that, because that's one of the most expensive things is on the roadside.
Yeah, and then county can get the federal papers.
I have a question. Thank you so much for coming to the meeting today. You know, I'm really glad that you brought up that the DOE had last funds in CIP for our schools. And I'm very passionate about our schools and our children and our education. Could you please provide our board the amount of monies for the different schools, the list of the budget left? And could you please explain to us what had happened there?
Yeah, so the Department of Education kind of surprised the legislature and the public about a week before the beginning of legislative sessions, saying that surprise, I'm not going to be able to spend $468 million. So they were kind of raked over the toll by the Senate. The Senate President came down from on high. The governor is unhappy about it. Their second in command at that DOE has been replaced and is now a temporary hire. So nobody's happy about this. And the DOE seems to have management issues that aren't played by other departments. For example, Department of Human Services seems to be like really well managed. One of my best friends is the director over there. It's like they, you know, they see a problem, they, they do it, you know? Kids eat breakfast, they do SNAP benefits, they bank it out. The numbers, we just got those today. And I'm going to put those in the mailer as soon as I can. Right now it's moving hot and fast. And what I'm trying to do is just argue to the best of my ability that the amount that was promised to Kalihii, which are Title I schools, needs to be paid for. Title I means the certain percentage of the students there get yeah, yeah, free or some diet food, right? So it's like, and that's like really code for lower socioeconomic. I mean, so like, you know, you can kind of like gauge where you need to invest if it's not a Title I school. So I'm doing the like kind of private arguing right now. The numbers are loose that are going to come out. And they're not up to me. This is up to the finance chair in the House and the DOE. So as soon as I get them, you get them.
Okay, great. Thank you. A little part to that.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from?
I do have a question.
Yes, Angela, ask your question.
Hello, Representative Sonny. I was just wondering. So I love learning more about the Lahaina Recovery Effort and working with the various teams and the methods and strategies being implemented for the recovery efforts. And I look forward to the art museum collaboration for the art show that they're doing. And I've been very supportive of the art museum bills. Although there were some bureaucratic processes of shifting offices around, which not going to get involved in. So I just want to ask, so I have a question about the Lahaina Recovery and where we're at with that. Or if you're comfortable with responding about the art show, if there is a set list for the art show.
Okay, thank you. I see Angela every day. She comes into the legislature. I think you should follow Ms. Young's example. Just come to the legislature. And you can learn about a bill just by sitting there and testify if you want, or just chill. You might be next to the governor. It might be next to some very famous person or just a girl in the neighborhood. So she's there every day. As for Lahaina, this is international concern. We heard from residents that we need to slow down that process. It is primarily first and second generation Filipino Americans, just like Kalihii that populate Lahaina. So I had an opportunity to go there and work with Filipino border club. And we tried to get people services and get them to process things like their SNAP benefits. And I get them the housing thing that they needed. We did that over the summer. It's really traumatic for a lot of people. And it's a continuously evolving thing. I try to stay kind of out of it. I mean, because it's like, it's that community and we just want to support the things that they need. But all legislators across the aisle have supported the full payment of like all DHL benefits right now. And then we'll just figure out how we're going to pay for it later. Like, people are really hurting. Over 100 people died. It's the largest wildfire in American history. As for the art event on April 14th, you're all invited to art at the Capitol. My office is is hosting once again an art event in conjunction with the State Foundation Culture of the Art. So we got ballet. We've got free food in the offices and all offices are open. You pay for the art, so 1% of the cost of every new building in the state of Hawaii goes worth the purchase of public art. And so just come check it out. It's your money. It's your art. I'm going to be emceeing it in a lot of fun. April 14th.
One, one question. So this is in regards to, you mentioned about Hiko, right? In terms of the money they could solve it. What happens if that doesn't happen? Now, we don't consider junk bonds, you said, on the MISC.
They, they could potentially go bankrupt. And then they go on the open market and Hiko gets sold to a mainline corporation. Or we do what Hawaii does. So Hawaii has a co-op where, what?
Why don't we?
Yeah, right. So like, so we're really thinking about this. That is a whole new level of governmental bureaucracy. Should we? So it's like, really, should we, we, I think there continues to be a question. Should we be owning our own electric meters? The problem is, Hiko also does work with the military. And like, we've got such big energy draws here as compared to Hawaii or even Maui that like, that owning in publicly would be a massive amount of infrastructure to invest in, right? So it's like, so should we just let another company like buy it out and let it eat it? A lot of things happening, right?
So would that company have to then assume whatever liabilities that came up from Hiko?
That's how it goes. Yeah.
Any other questions from the community? Any questions online? All right. Thank you. Oh, one more. Okay, okay. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Right next, we have Governor Josh Green, Representative. Brianna? Okay, we're going to move on. Mayor Rick Lindjard, Representative. Hi, Stephen. Stephen.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Stephen Courtney, the mayor's representative and the deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. First, I'd like to start off with some highlights from the mayor's newsletter. I did put it into the chat mode in regards to where you can find that online. But some of the items that are in there are making the beaches safer. They're they are providing these yellow rescue, rescue tubes that are making the beaches safer, safer. And also another highlight there, a new sculpture is unveiled at Honolulu's Inha Park. It's one of the sister cities in South Korea. So again, if you need to find out more information about what's happening island wide, then please go to the mayor's newsletter. From the Department of Enterprise Services, Honolulu Zoo was named, was nominated for the best zoo in America by USA Today. For the first time, the Honolulu Zoo has been nominated as a candidate for best zoo in America in 2024 by USA Today, 10 Best Readers' Choice Awards. And currently, right now, we're number four out of 20. So please, so please vote in regards to moving it up. We did hit number three briefly, but please go to HonoluluZoo.org. You can vote once per day all the way through May, March 4th. And I've also, I'm going to try to place that also in the chat as well. Again, that's HonoluluZoo.org. I have some announcements from the Department of Transportation Services in regards to bus service modifications. And these will take effect March 3rd, 2024. In particular, Route 10 Kalihii to Leva Heights. Afternoon school day only service will be discontinued from my May, May elementary school at bus stop number 3914. As well as afternoon school day service for Kawana Nakoi Middle School will be modified to serve bus stop number 4658. Also for bus route 88A North Shore Express, there'll be changes in the morning service as well as afternoon service. Also on Route 123, Papua Koleo to Pacific Heights, there'll be changes in the school day only trips. Regards to unfortunately will be discontinued for 7:49 AM departing bus stop number 2288 and 8:01 AM departing bus stop number 3826. And again, if you have any questions regards to those changes, please email thebusstop@hololulu.gov. In regards to department issues, follow up from DFM in regards to the street sweeper. Board member Colin reported a street sweeper going in the opposite direction on North King during rush hour traffic. DFM responded in accordance with the Honolulu Traffic Code. Mechanical street sweepers may move in either direction on one-way streets in the performance of their duties. DFM has reviewed this practice and has directed its mechanical street sweeper operators to travel in only the direction with traffic unless the street is closed. the direction with traffic unless the street is closed, with traffic or under emergency situations. We also had a question in regards to the H N O 311 app. Board Member Pintor inquired about the process behind the 311 app. From D I T, Information Technology, well, basically, there are four steps in regards to getting that process going. First is submission. A citizen submits a request for service or reports an issue. The citizen does not need to know which department to contact, because H N O 311 automates the submission process by determining the responsible department. The app has predetermined request types such as public safety, trash, transportation, et cetera. The submission triggers a workflow which is unique to each request type. Second, schedule. Once your request is submitted, your request is reviewed by the appropriate city department and the work is assigned or scheduled. From there, the actual work is performed. The appropriate city department performs the work. Estimated times to complete vary by request. Then finally, update. If you sign up, we send you updates as work is completed on your request by email or by phone. And as an example, for example, if you submit a homeless concern by selecting cleanup shopping cart, this will route the request to the Department of Facility Maintenance, Stored Property Ordinance Section. And again, that's just one example. On the back end, in regards to what happens within the departments, from their perspective, a departmental clerk and the manager both receive an email that a new quest has been created in OneView. OneView is the backend system that that happens on the department side. The clerk logs into the OneView to review their request, prints it out, and assigns it to the appropriate staff to work on. The staff may request additional information from the citizen if needed. The assigned staff reports back to the clerk to make necessary changes and comments in OneView, which is reflected in the H N O 311 app. The manager will automatically receive an email for any request updates in OneView. The citizen who submitted the request with H N O 311 app account will also receive an email for any updates. When their request has been resolved, the manager will close the case in OneView. So the next one is in regards to traffic violations on Dillonham Boulevard. And actually, Harry actually followed up on this in regards to making the illegal left-hand turns. I guess I'll just reiterate what from heart. Since the start of the utility relocations along Dillonham Boulevard, Heart and the construction contractor have made improvements to the signage and cones and a position special duty officers at major intersections along Dillonham Boulevard to maintain traffic and enforce the current driving conditions. However, there are instances of motorists not following the posted signage and making illegal turn turn movements. Heart will continue to work with the Department of Transportation Services, Honolulu Police Department, and our contractors to improve safety for motorists and pedestrians. Board Member Colin asked about bus route number 306 Kalii Circulator in regards to making it a a permanent route. And yes, it is now permanent route. Bus 306 is permanent now.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a good one there. In regards to bus route number one, Board Member Farm requested to increase the bus frequency on Route 1 since Route A was discontinued on North King Street. D T S responded. Route 1, which is from Kalii to Kalii Mall, has the most weekday service in the bus system with 187 daily trips, 95 eastbound and 92 westbound. As a comparison, Route 2 has 155 daily weekday trips. In addition to the Route 1 trips, Route 1 L provides 15 daily weekday trips as designated limited stops. Weekday service frequencies for Route 1 average 10 minutes between 4 a.m. and 7 p.m. and 30 to 35 minutes between 7 p.m. and 1:30 a.m. Based on the current level of service for Route 1, system-wide service priorities and a constrained budget increase in Route 1 service will not be considered at this time. That's unfortunate there. And also, I'd like to also mention, along with H N O 311 app, the city also provides another app called H N L dot info. It's another app that you can download, and that's where you can find traffic on Oahu, any emergency weather advisories, and you can even sign up for classes at Oahu Parks as well. With that, are there any questions?
All right. Any questions from the board? Okay.
If anybody wants to go first.
I'll be quick. I'll be quick. So you had a full plate, so I don't want to add to it. You had to let us have the answer. You know, I know Vice Chair Pintor got me thinking when he was advocating for Community College that it would be great to have somebody, and this could go over to council members, so I don't have to repeat the question, but we get somebody from D H R come and kind of push some of the programs that the city does. I was thinking the apprenticeship program where they help people get licensed in a trade and work for the city at the same time, mechanics, electricians. And also to push the Po'akela program, which also holds a little bit of place in my heart, because I was a Po'akela intern at the Ethics Commission in 2010, a long time ago. So there's a lot of value to these programs, and I don't think they're really well-known. And it would be great to have that outreach and educate the community in these alternatives to maybe a four-year degree and still have a great living. So that's all I want to add, and to kind of piggyback some of Vice Chair's.
Thank you. All right, Evelyn.
Oh, okay. So Ms. Colin again. Sunny mentioned something about some property taxes, and if people didn't respond or pay for it, it converted to commercial tax now. So what was the turnaround time for that? Because some, you know, with the inflation that we all face here today and now to suddenly, all of a sudden, your property tax, you're paying commercial rate. I would hope that they would allow the people some time to to catch up or just not switch it to commercial rate from the get-go. And then my next one is on the 311 app. I have some requests that I submitted that's over two years old, and I know once it gets resolved, it says closed, submitted, received. So majority of those that I'm two years old, no response came from D P P. So I tried to resubmit on one particular nuisance in my community, and they wouldn't accept it because it said that I had already submitted something on that address. So I don't know what else to do but to share here with you today.
Okay, I guess in regards to those. If you, if it's possible to actually, because there is a number associated with those requests, and all I can do is, because again, it all depends on the respective department in regards to them responding, but if it's possible, if you could send me those actual request numbers, I mean, I could try to find out what's happened to them. And you could, you can send it to Stephen dot Courtney at Honolulu dot gov.
Thank you.
All right, Ken. Hi. Sorry. So first off, Stephen, thank you very much for the follow-up on that. I did want to add, though, I understand, I mean, for the information, and it's good for people to know how much people use that, you know, the public area. So I put on to make that into a 24-hour route. That's a different story. Not bus route 987, which is right in front of Mayor Wright's. The 1 L bypasses that. I'm not asking for a brand-new bus stop. A brand-new bus stop costs $250,000 just for the concrete alone. We're asking that, like, the 1 L, for example, stop on the corner of Leleha and King, where you have a bunch of students that take school from there, because not everybody goes to McKinley. Technically, that area is supposed to go to McKinley minus the, what's called a general exemption, geographic exemption to all the students that go to Farrington. So if the 1 L can at least make a stop there and then off, that would be very helpful, I think, because I take buses from that area, and I can see that if the one breaks down, we have a problem. Because if all the other people on top of the other people that are trying to get on there, then you got students that are on there as well. So if we can consider that, bring that up to D T S, to O S T, that would be something I think would, you know, you kind of, I was thinking about a way that could kind of make this work. So maybe that could be a way to make that work.
Okay, I will, I will look at do, seeing what D T S can do.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a question about the Maui mural in downtown that was painted by Mayor Belangiardi and the Clean Water Heroes and the Councilmember Tyler and Rep. Mark Hashim, and then also the Deputy Director of the City and the Director of Climate Change and the Chinese Chamber of Commerce.
Question.
So I was wondering if there are more art projects like that, because art is so important to children to help them process their emotions and to express themselves with a creative outlet, and it teaches about social emotional learning strategies.
Okay. In regards to those art projects, that's more under this other office of Moka, Mayor's Office for Culture and Arts, and I can ask what other art projects are in, are in play.
Okay, yeah. I like the one in downtown. I think it reflects the tree from Maui. Yeah, I was just wondering if there's anywhere projects like that being painted elsewhere. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the community? All right. Any questions online? Okay, thank you, Stephen.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right. Up next is Councilmember Radien Cordaro.
I hear Radien. Hi, good evening, everyone. Chair, Vice Chair, community members and board members. I did, we did submit a report, a written report for you all. I also included it in the chat box for those who are online. I'm gonna go ahead and also share my screen so that you folks can also see it. Okay. I hope you guys can see my screen. Okay, can you see it? I'm not sure. This is my first time sharing, so hopefully you can see her report. So Councilmember Cordaro wanted me to highlight the community concerns. So there was a constituent concern regarding a pothole on Walter Lane. It had been filled and repaired. The encampment along Kapalama Canal has also been addressed. D H M, H P D had gone, had gone out there and spoke to a female and had asked that person to leave, and they complied and left, and D F M did remove the dwelling that was in the brush area and the trash and debris in that area as well. So we wanted to thank H P D and D F M for all their hard work. In regards to last meeting, Councilmember did mention that she would assist with coordinating the Kalih Valley and with Kalih Valley and of your folks in regards to setting up a partnership of a cleanup at the Kapalama Canal. So D F M is available on March 9, and we put tentative, so because it's a discussion, if you could, folks, if that works for both neighborhood boards, and Councilmember Cordaro is available to work with both chairs and willing to work with both chairs to coordinate this. If this works, that's great. If not, let us know, or Kyle, who we are working with at D F M, to set this up. Calendar events are also on the right-hand side of the report. Councilmember did want to also mention, because there are a lot of community members that do utilize the Kehe Lagoon for the pickleball courts. It is, she just wanted to share that it is under improvements right now, and it is closed, temporarily closed until mid-March, so it'll reopen in mid-March. So just wanted to give you guys that heads up. On the second page of the report, Councilmember had attended the unveiling of the second mural since the launch of the Drive with Aloha program, which launched in December of last year, and so far, two mirrors went up. Farrington High School was the second mural that was unveiled. More information can be found on their website, and it's also on the report. She has additional information here regarding a meeting that D P P had held back in January regarding the amendments to the city's Affordable Housing Requirements rules. Information here for you folks to to review and digest. Additional information can be found on their website at Honolulu.gov slash D P P. So before I go to that, there's also additional highlights on the third page or last page of the report. Just sharing that regarding the D N B's self-service kiosks, and also just a reminder for those who are needing to renew their license or estate IDs that you have up to six months in advance to do so. So yes. And then I believe there was a question earlier, and maybe this could be responsibly, Angela had it earlier regarding the C P R training. So Honolulu Fire Department did do a little bit of a training with the city council due to an incident that occurred during one of the meetings, and they had notified us, which we would like to share with you folks, that any organizations interested in, or any agents are interested in having the Honolulu Fire Department come out to do a C P R or add fire and life safety type of education. You're welcome to go on their website and then request for information. So the link there will take you to where you can request for information, and then it has bullet points where, I guess, buttons, selections that you could select what type of information you would like. So one of them is the C P R training that can be requested. And then lastly, as mentioned earlier by Deputy Director, Councilmember Cordaro does want to encourage everyone to please vote for Honolulu Zoo. This is a great opportunity for a zoo to be showcased, and hopefully we can get to number one. But yes, you are number four, and you can vote once a day, every day until March 4. So please go ahead and pass your vote. This concludes my report. Oh, last thing would be if any of you has not yet signed up for our newsletter, we do send it out every end of month. Just highlight that comes from our Councilmember Cordaro. The link is at the very bottom of the last page, and you can also contact our office at 808-768-5007, and just provide us with your name and email address, and we'd be glad to include you in our email blast out to the community, community event.
All right, Honolulu, any questions from the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. I have a question. So in the Kalih Kai area, we have a lot of commercial parking, and I was wondering if Councilmember would be able to introduce some type of legislation to enforce that, or is there any legislation in place that can be enforced for that type of issues in our community?
You're referring to, did you say parking in Kalih Kai area?
Yes.
Okay. I'll have to take that back. Would you be able to email our office and we can work together in regards to the legislative part of it? Yes, because I know it's gonna take a lot of dialogue.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Nice to you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, so I don't know if you were here earlier, where I shared my concern about D O T H Waunoo District Base Yard relocation happening right next to Amazon. If that, I'm gonna forward the email to Radien, if she could take a look and be a voice on on the community members behalf. So I'm gonna forward it to her. It had to do with the anticipated traffic mess that's to come to our area once Amazon is in full swing, as well as the D O T H relocation. All in one area, kind of like a la call over here with all these big box doors and congestion that's happening over here. I could foresee that happening there. And then I wanted to piggyback off what you had asked in regards to commercial parking. Were you specifically talking about double parking on those lanes on Kalih Street, two lanes going down, two lanes going up? Right off of Democrat Street, there's a couple of businesses that really used one of the single lanes as their own private parking lot during morning traffic, in fact, all day long, and it'd be there for like three to four hours at a time. So what I've done in the past, I've called 911 immediately. And so I have to continually, continually do this just to see that they get the message. Also, my concern would be with Manson Produce. That's a huge commercial business that parks all of their vehicles on city roads. business that parks all of their vehicles on city roads. And they park up so near the corner that it's a blindside for everyone that traverses the area. So we need help in that regard. And, and, and we need our parking as residents because we do.
I'll take all of that back, yes.
Okay, any more questions from the board?
Yes. Question. Yes, okay, so, hey, Councilmember Radiance Office. Always very supportive of the homeless cleanups and also the Clean Water Heroes efforts with the various teams that they work with. And so I was wondering with like homelessness, emergency response, and then like training for CPR. I'm wondering about this CPR because there was a Senate bill which was enacted last season. Hello?
What's the question?
So I'm wondering about emergency response because this act was about D O and coordinating drills to test emergency response at school. And although each member is trained to respond in good faith when activated, they're not responding. So what other trainings are there to provide us resources to the community for emergency preparedness? And critical medical emergencies responses?
Okay, thank you, Angela.
I'll take that back, and we'll see what we can provide at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Angela. Any questions from the community? All right, thank you. Up next, we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos talk.
Aloha, Vice Chair, Board and Community Members. This is Lynn Robinson, representing Councilmember Dos Santos Town. I have a very brief report. I know it's getting late. I did, Councilmember did want to report that Bill forty was signed last Friday by the mayor. So that's the bill that'll give grant funding to help the Dillingham area small businesses for their, the ones that are affected by the ongoing rail-related construction. That only signs the bill into law, so the nuts and bolts and the rollout, right? All of the protocols and requirements are not in place yet. So I will continue to update the board about how people can apply. And obviously, we'll be updating the community as well. We've had a lot of calls about illegal dumping and a lot of calls about the encampments that are blocking our city sidewalks and that are in the parks. While you are always, you know, welcome to reach out to our office, we put in these, you know, their requests for investigation and service reports, and we've had success with that. It, it seems to take more time. And so through talking to these departments, they're encouraging you to call. The N V would like you to call any illegal dumping into seven six eight five two two zero. And any encampments that are problematic. So after closing hours causing any kind of problems in our parks or blocking any sidewalks, please call seven six eight four three eight one. I will put both of those numbers in the chat, but I wanted to say them out loud for, for the minutes. Also, we are actively recruiting for summer interns. Right now, we have two fabulous interns that have been with us through the spring semester. And as I, you know, like to say, we like to have a robust intern team. So please keep in mind that students are always welcome, but any kind of non-traditional student of any age and any background is welcome to apply. Just send me a resume and cover letter, and I've put my, my information in the chat. I've also put the link to Councilmember's newsletter and all of his newsletters in the chat. So please just kind of hang on to that. That'll always be updated, and obviously, I'll always report it here. I have one quick question for you folks. Do you, those of you that are in person at Kapalama Halei, do you, do you folks have the hard copies of Councilmembers newsletter?
Yes.
You did? Oh, good. Okay, so that, that's awesome. And lastly, similarly, please, if anyone wants to be, receive our newsletter and other communication via email, please email me, and we'll make sure that you get on that distro list. And, you know, we're, we're happy to get all of our information out that way. I think I'm, I think I'm going to stop there. I think there might be some questions. So please, I'd be happy to take anything back to the Councilmember.
Yes, all right. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. You know the number for the illegal dumping and encampments?
Yeah.
How do we go about if it's on private property? But the leasers or the businesses no longer run? So there's, if you make a report to the cops, they'd say that they can't really do anything because it's private property?
That might be an issue that you would reach out to me about, to our office about, and maybe we could ask for an inspection by the Department of Planning and Permitting.
And those are the numbers he gave us?
No, I would, reach out to me. Don't, yeah, something that's on private property, yeah. Maybe we could have the Department of Planning and Permitting. And, and may I add that, you know, an email or a call is great, but any compelling evidence? So a narrative with, with photographs, with photos, you know, any kind of pictures you can take is hugely helpful in this, in those instances. But I'd be happy to help you. We can see what we can do.
Thank you.
I, I got a question now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so what do we do about squatters who take over a home that's been reported to D P P? And nothing's happened. Somebody like. So lately in Kalii, there's been a lot of fires on the news. So I'm just waiting one of these days. That's what's going to happen there. And all the activity and the squatters in the home, and the homeowner does not want to do anything about. It's considered an investment property. Leave it the way it is.
So is this similar to maybe what we were talking about, about reporting to the three one one app and not hearing back?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Yeah, so again, any compelling evidence? Any history, any, especially documentation of your previous reporting? If you could get that to me, I would put it into, through our riser system, through our request for investigation to the City Managing Director's Office. It will get referred to the Department of Planning and Permitting, and it'll come from our office. So it's something that then, you know, we can track. I can't make any promises, but, you know, we try. I, I, I think most people here know Councilmember's record with the Department of Planning and Permitting and his commitment to having, you know, that, that department work the way that it should. So we'd be happy to help.
I mean, I know he's not in my district. I'm more under Cordaro, but he's a mover and shaker in that respect, like you just mentioned with D P P, so maybe that would help.
Yeah, either, either way, please know, I mean, sometimes we pivot if it's not our district, but please know that Councilmember Cordaro's office and our office work very, very closely together.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other board members questions? Any other community members have questions?
I do have a question.
Okay. Break to the question, please.
Okay, so there was an House Bill two two five three that set forth a policy to allow police officers and law enforcement first responders to administer opiate antagonists. And so it's kind of good to see the city lead first.
Questions?
Okay. Am I getting timed?
Yes.
What is your question?
What is the question?
My question was just that it was good to see the city lead on the effort with the Narcan and then the state's response. So this measure permits Department of Health to provide education and training for law enforcement.
Angela, what is the question?
Well, my question is, is there going to be any more efforts in the, working with the Narcan and also administering medical care? More efforts with the city and the state, because it's so segregated, city and state, but I think it's better when it works together.
Thanks for your question. I think that the city and state are getting on the same page. I think that the hospital obviously is moving forward as far as the city. That bill rolled out in January. I don't, I think that you may know that Councilmember, prior to that, our office, along colla, in a collaboration with the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, delivered Narcan to many of our local businesses in the district so that they would not have an issue with compliance. We got overwhelming support. And so moving forward, if there is anyone, any entity that is looking for training and would like to have Narcan on hand, they should reach out to the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. And they are, they have that available.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Angela.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the community? All right, any questions online? All right, Mahalenui.
Hello, everyone. Aloha.
So we are going to have to defer the community resources and educational institution and also the committee reports. And the announcement, the next Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM. Location is to be determined. Oh, wait, no, I lied. The location will be here and also through WebEx. The Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board recordings can be seen on Olelo Channel forty-nine or at W W W dot olelo dot org live at the following times, first Monday of each month at nine PM, and second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven AM. I call this meeting to adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, cards.
Thank you.